Forget.
Good evening. Want to call this meeting to order? Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you all for coming this evening. This is going to be a regular meeting of the Village of Washingtonville Planning Board. Comments may be submitted in writing to the billing department at washingtonville-newyork.gov. First things, we're going to make a motion to accept the January 24 Village Planning Board minutes. Everybody's got a copy in front of them. You want to take a quick look? I make a motion that we accept the January 24 Village Planning Board meeting minutes.
Aye.
Yeah, hello.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much. Meeting carried and they have been accepted. Okay, first up, 61 East Main Street LLC, site plan and subdivision lot line change, section block and lot 114-1-3.22 and 113-2-31. Good evening. That one doesn't come on, is that one?
Oh, it came on.
I mean, if it doesn't get switched on. I've only got two inputs tonight. Hello? One, two, one, two.
No, it's a four.
Hello?
It just has the wall up.
The area on the road.
There we go.
Good evening, everyone. For the record again, my name is Michael Morgante. I'm the project engineer for this application that's before the planning board. Since the last time we were here, we again had heard some comments from the public and it is our understanding that procedurally tonight, we're not sure if the public has notified properly to be continued for the next meeting. So that was the majority, what my understanding was that we were here for tonight. But we would take this opportunity to hear more questions and comments from the board and from the public and if there's anything specific that you would love to address, we would be glad to do so.
All right. The board does have some questions for you, so we're going to take care of that. I don't know if you could just take a minute. Last meeting you went over the water and flood mitigation. I don't know if you could just cover that for the crowd this evening briefly?
Yeah, sure. So again, the, if you take a look at the flood elevation maps that are online, and being that Washington had a history of some flood issues as we're all aware of, they have pretty accurate, up-to-date flood elevations on these new FEMA maps. So the flood elevation that was noted in our area for this particular project was elevation 307. 307 is towards the back of the site with the rear park and these dumpsters. And our first floor elevation of the buildings based on the historical photos we saw, information we grabbed from FEMA website online, is actually 313.3. So in order to get flood insurance, like I need to be at elevation 309. That's how confident FEMA is in their elevations. But based on historical photos, we took a look at floodwaters during that photo. We took a look at the contour elevations that were on our site. And with a super belt and suspender approach, we've raised the first floor elevation of the building 313.3. I need to be two feet above the 100-year flood elevation. I'm 6.3 feet above the 100-year flood elevation. I've noted before to this board, I've done other projects in the village that are right down the street off Hallick's Drive and Nickel Drive. And we were somewhere around 309, I think, on those buildings. And floodwaters never got to us for either storm. So I'm 3.3, I'm sorry, 4.3 feet higher than that. I'm super confident there will be no flood insurance related to the product. The second thing as it relates to stormwater, so pretty much the entire site, the impervious surfaces from the site will be collected in subsurface, call it pipes, for the lack of a better way of describing it, to keep it simple. So the water will accumulate in these pipes. It will be stored there but have the opportunity, because the bottoms are open, to recharge back into the groundwater. This is called an infiltration practice or infiltration facility. It's a nice approach because we deal with water quality volume issues, runoff reduction volume issues and are required from a New York State D E C storm removal program. And we are trying to keep the pre-development hydrology, hydrology is a fancy word for stormwater and rain that runs off, we're trying to keep the post-development, I'm sorry, conditions on the site equal to or better than the pre-development. So that's the idea here. And we're meeting that. We're meeting all the requirements of that New York State D E C SWIP report and regulations. The site, the facility has been designed for a 100-year storm event, not to be confused with a 100-year flood elevation. Not necessarily the same then. But we can basically capture and we can store and we can recharge up to a 100-year storm. So we're keeping the post-developed flow that exits the site equal to or less than the pre-development flow that leaves the site. So these are all rules and regulations that are required, which we were able to maintain and meet or exceed in this case. So that's a general summary of the flood elevation issues and the stormwater issues.
All right, thank you. Anybody on the board have any questions?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Following up on what you just said, you have a write-up here that you're bringing about 6,000 cubic yards on site. Because of the elevation?
Correct. That's probably appropriate.
And you say material? Do you know what material you're bringing in?
It'll be clean fill. We'll make sure that we select a borrow pit that is approved and noted with the building inspector. Typically, how you do this stuff is during construction, you would notify the building inspector where the borrow pit is. We could have manifesto produced that they can check so we know where the fill's coming from, going to, when it was deposited, how many trucks were deposited there, and so on and so forth.
Okay, I have a question for you on the traffic because of the quantity of material bringing in. There's a couple hundred vehicles coming one way, so do a round-trip calculations. So, and whether you're running on 20s, 30s, or 18 dumps, it's hundreds of loads. So how are you going to address, and I don't know the crunch time for this, have you identified what period of time you would be bringing that traffic in, commercial vehicles? And so if there's 318 yard dumps coming in, there's going to be 300 empties going out. It's a significant impact. I wondered if you could comment on your traffic considerations.
I will defer to our traffic consultant on that, but I will add that we could do our best to schedule the deliveries during less than peak hours during the day. So after 9:00, 10:00 in the morning, before 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon. But we can make sure that we note that the plans make it a condition of approval, but I'll defer to Phil Wilson.
Philip Greeley from Colliers Engineering Design. So the village can put restrictions, but because we're getting a permit from New York State DOT, they also have restrictions in terms of times of day that they want the trucks delivering to the site. The other, I guess, scenario is when the material is brought in, it has to be placed, it has to be compacted, so this will be done over a period of time. It won't be, you know, all happening in a week. So typical operations, this is spread out over at least a two, three, sometimes a longer period of time depending on how they're placing the material. But part of the permits with DOT would have restrictions. And then, you know, to avoid the times when the schools are busy, typically what they want to do is start either before that or after 9:30. That's typical.
Okay, just to follow up on both of you. Thank you for the information. So you're saying only clean fill?
Correct.
Okay, only clean fill. And that there will be not any other type of material buried in that ground?
There's no intention for anything other than clean fill to be placed there. I, we can, we can take a look at what is permissible and make sure that we keep it in line with whatever New York State D E C allows.
Yeah, they have a very specific definition on fill.
I've done filling and grading plans.
Yeah, I have too. So the other question I have is, can you provide, if there is a way to provide a notice, if material comes in and you discover that is not clean fill and you segregate it and put it to the side, and then, so where there's certainty that you're using clean fill, if you discover it's not clean fill, for example?
So if we have a specific borrow pit, and that borrow pit's been tested and known to be clean fill, we have a manifest, and we know the trucks are coming from that site, coming to our site, and that's on the manifest, I think we'd be avoiding your situation.
Well, you would be identifying the trailing of materials, that's correct. But when you have materials that come in that aren't what was described, because you have to do onsite when you empty inspection? So if you discover it, I'm just looking for, how might you cover that if you discover that your material is not up to what you expect?
Yeah, I think if we have a proper filling and grading plan, I think we will avoid all that. But in the event that some anomaly should occur, we could certainly make sure that we place that in the location on the site or just tell the truck to turn around and leave the site.
Well, reloading and, and...
Correct, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No problem.
In layman's terms, it's like, you're doing all this to avoid the flood. But what is being done to guarantee that the neighboring properties are not going to be taking on extra water because of this?
Sure. So the idea behind this grading plan is that we have what's called a zero net fill increase on the site. So even though we are placing some fill potentially in the flood zone in certain areas for the development, we are also excavating out an equal amount of material in that same flood zone. So we're keeping the volume of storage within that flood zone exactly the same. So if I placed 100 yards of material inside that flood zone for, let's say, one corner of the parking lot in the back, I'd have to take 100 yards of material out someplace else on our site within the flood zone. So that your net deposit, deposit of filled material is zero. There'll be no additional, there'll be no additional fill placed on the site above and beyond what we would compensate for. Did I explain that to you okay?
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions, Tom?
Okay, so, can you hear me?
Yes.
The last time that we were here, I asked about water and sewage use and you said that you had a conversation, from what I read in the paperwork, since you had a conversation that stated that it would not be, I'm going to look at it exactly, that there was enough capacity for, for these apartments to be, you know, in terms of water and sewage use. Do you have the numbers, like can we see the numbers of the capacity of the town's water and sewage and that what you would be using and how, what the change would be? Can we see those numbers?
I can ask for them. They were not, they were not provided to me. The only thing that was provided to me was that there's adequate capacity for what we're looking for. But I can certainly make a call to the water superintendent. I forget his name. I've spoken to him before. I have his number. And I can ask him, see if they can give me those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Greeley, a question for you. Could you, at the last meeting, we were discussing the DOT letter and information?
Yes.
And the crosswalk and blinking light?
Yes.
There was a little gray area. I'm clear on it, please?
So we've made an application to New York State DOT for reconstructing the access drive and various other improvements. The review has been ongoing since last April. We started getting substantial comments last July revising the plans. What they've asked us to do, and I'm giving, I'm going to get to your specific question, but they've been, you know, giving us modifications to the plans. We've been resubmitting back and forth. And the latest, as of February 7th, we received some additional comments. And they've asked us to repaint the crosswalk, fix all the ADA ramps, and relative to what's called the RRFB, which is the Rapid Flashing Beacon, they've asked us to hold off on that at this time. They've asked us to provide improvements to the signals at 208 and 94 and at Brotherhood and 94. So those are the given right now that we have to do. If the village feels strongly about the RRFBs, I would suggest that you relay that to DOT or you can tell me and I'll relay it. They've been looking at these in different locations. We had identified that as a possible improvement there. But right now, they wanted to do a, I'll call it, see how things are developing and that could be a requirement of the final permit. But right now, it's not. And these are push-button activated, just so, I don't know if you're familiar with them?
Yeah, no, I understood. I remembered it was a wait-and-see. And now would I wait and see the, at what point?
It would be, it would be a condition of our approval that we would have to look at it, or permit would be kept open after the occupancy is in the building. We would have to then reevaluate it, show the number of pedestrian crossings. And part of the reason they've asked this is because they looked at pedestrian crossings that occur there and right now, they don't feel there's a demand, but there could be in the future. That's why it was a wait-and-see, but it would be a condition of our approval that we would be responsible to install it if they wanted.
Understood, thank you. Regarding these smart traffic lights that are going, that they've said we need to install, could you give us some idea about how much relief they will provide or not?
So at this point, what DOT has asked to, as part of our permit, that we have to install video detection, so there are video cameras that are installed at both signals. Those allow DOT to control the signals remotely. They, unlike the typical vehicle detection that when, like for example, when Brotherhood was installed originally, 20 years ago when we designed that, there are loop detectors in the pavement. They're subject to failure. You know, if there's resurfacing or if there's utility work, a lot of times they get cut. Then you have to wait for DOT to come out through the repair. So by having the video detection, that allows them to control the signals remotely. The next step would be to do what's called an adaptive traffic signal. All they've asked us to install are the video detection. And they're evaluating different parts of the state in this region where they're installing adaptive. So for example, down near Woodbury Common, those signals are smart signals. They're adaptive. They'll, they'll actually skip a cycle. If there's a backup on a ramp, it'll let traffic back up on Route 32 and let the ramp release. And Walkill on Route 211, they're in the process of doing that also on that system. Here, because they're just the two signals, they have not gone to the adaptive. But they're having us put in the equipment so that if they go to adaptive, and basically what you're talking about, that's the super smart signal. By having video detection, it's smart because they can adjust the timing patterns for different times of the day. The adaptive will automatically adapt to instantaneous, you know, cycle changes.
Okay, so with the plan as it stands right now, what they're requiring, somebody's actually going to monitor the traffic and then set them on some type of a timing schedule?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else with a question? But thank you. Anyone else?
This is a follow-up to the question on use of salt with the DOT. Did you have the opportunity to check for alternatives?
I did not, quite frankly. I can still look into that, but I would need to let you know the next meeting.
And a question on the lights. Will the lights be installed while all the truck traffic is here coming in and out with Phil?
So the condition of the permits are typically that those would be done before occupancy of any units. However, in this case, if that's something the village would like to have done, that could be done earlier in the process.
Thank you.
And again, I think anything that you want as part of DOT to include in the permit, if you make a list, you can either, you know, give it to me or I can give you who it should be forwarded to and they can be working with it for you.
Understood. I guess, as everybody knows, flooding, water mitigation and traffic are the two biggest issues in public comment. So I really want to get this properly, but with the light process that's going to be installed, can we expect an improvement or the same or a degradation in traffic?
Where these have been installed, there's been an improvement. The real improvement is when you get to the adaptive system because it responds to each cycle. But the video detection has been tremendous in terms of DOT being able to adjust the daily patterns and the timing patterns. So the answer is yes, there's been an improvement. It reduces queues, which is typically what, yeah, but again, the main intersection in the center of the village, there's only so much volume you can push through that intersection because of the lane restrictions. But it does make it more efficient. The signals will tend to work better together. So, you know, sometimes if you come out of the center of the village, you may get stuck in Brotherhood. This will, this will allow that to work more efficiently.
That was my next question. Whoever sets these up with the system that they're going to install first, they're sequenced to kind of time each other?
Correct, yes. And what happens, you know, typically, you know, if there's a power surge, they'll go out of sequence. With the video detection and the remote monitoring, they can fix that like this. They don't have to send out a crew to read time and so on and so forth.
Okay, and I guess I have to ask this question. Between this system and the adaptive, how much more money are we talking about?
So the, the camera systems that are going in, installed at each location, is about $50,000 each. The adaptive system for the software license, which is on a per, like, area basis, is about another $45,000 to $50,000 for that.
Thank you. I'm just going to say, if anybody else on the board has questions, just plug me in. I'll hand you the microphone, but I wanted to ask you about the...
All right, one of the RRFBs, those are now running somewhere between 35,000 and 45,000 installed. Depending on power source and, but those, what those are running also.
Okay. Mike, with the last submission, there was a parapet that we were talking about in grading, in snow removal?
Yes.
Do you need to lighten us a little on that and where we're at?
Yeah, so I've given that some thought. I think what we can ultimately do is, I've got a pretty flat grade from like the middle of the two buildings towards that parapet. I think what I can do is I can actually, I can increase the slope from that point of building towards that rear parking lot, which I'll gain elevation back if you follow what I'm saying, because I'd be sloping down. And I think I can actually probably remove those parapets. I'm pretty sure I can. So that we would have a much more sloping topography that goes into the back and kind of meets the existing grade that's already back there.
At one point, we spoke about an accessway along the backs of the buildings for emergency use. Are we in place on that?
In terms of doorways you need or?
No doorways, just, you know, God forbid of an emergency. If a firefighter had to get to the rear of the building to do a rescue during, if there was snow on the ground, there's no real accessway there. It's just grass and I guess it would be snow.
And what are we thinking in terms of accessways?
Something along the back of the buildings or...
I could certainly put sidewalks back there. I can't, I don't know that you, you want me to pave?
No, no, no. I was thinking with just a narrow sidewalk.
Yeah, for sure. Sidewalk is not an issue. We can do that, yeah.
Anyone else have any questions? Any, do you, A D A?
Mike, can you explain something that I don't think I quite got it? Can you explain again how many parking spots and if there are visitor parking spots and how you're going to handle the ADA parking spots?
Phil might tag team with me on that one, but I'll start. So, I mean, so first of all, the village code says, right, two spaces per unit. So we are meeting the village codes and ten. But in other municipalities that I work in, that number's a lot lower. And that's an indication to me that the two spaces per unit is include, inclusive of visitor parking. We're also getting into the operations part of the building. I'm sure that the owner will probably set spaces for each individual unit, at least one car per unit. There will be therefore spaces left over. They will have to work out with the owners of each individual unit how those extra spaces are utilized, if they have extra cars, if they have visitors and so on and so forth. But it's my belief that the code is already taken into account with the higher number of spaces per unit visitor parking.
Okay, so you're saying that there is visitor parking on the, in the parking lot?
It's built into the two spaces per unit.
So you're, you're going to leave visitor spaces?
We can, we can certainly designate visitor spaces if that's something the board's interested in on the site. And again, that's not an issue. We can do that. But the thought was again, to assign parking spots to the residents, the balance of which are either visitor or if there are additional spaces that that particular tenant needs, they'd have to work with the owner to establish additional parking that they require. I don't know if there would be a fee. I'd have to work, that would be during operations. But if there's something in, in and above what you're asking for, we can certainly note on a certain part of the plan, designated visitor parking only.
You indicated last time that the ground, two ground floor units would be held so that they could use ground floor two, the handicap parking. Are those really handicap units? Are they ADA compliant or is it simply a convenience for future tenants?
I don't know if I have an answer for you on that. I think the intention is to have an ADA accessible unit in each building. I think it's actually required by New York State Building Code. So that is the intention. Whatever is required, we will provide that. That level of detail is not necessarily provided at this point in time provided when we submit final architectural plans for a building permit.
Okay, just wanted to see where your thought pattern is. The other thing is, have you considered using the access point out to the backyard? The pathway to snow disposal? If it's not, if it's summer and there's nobody parking in that path, could you consider that as parking, maybe seasonal parking?
Okay, if I'm understanding correctly, in the past, what I've done with something like that is we've called it maybe either shadow parking or banked parking. We can certainly note an area, especially if I'm able to reduce that grade like we talked about and have it meet like the existing contours that are on the site, we could certainly look at allocating some additional space back there. And this way, if the owner needs the additional parking, we have the ability to. And that's good forward thinking. I have no problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Jacqueline, any questions?
Testing. I wanted to know, because I'm, I'm new. So a unit is defined as what? The building or the apartments?
So, yeah, within each, so within each building, there's a unit. That unit would have the two bedrooms that are associated with it and whatever additional living facilities are there. So that's what a unit's consisting of. So you have 28 two-bedroom units. So you have 28 two-bedroom units.
Okay, so it's 28 units, that's what you're saying?
Correct. I have to double-check the plan, but I'm pretty sure that's correct.
I wanted to make sure, because I was reading something about land use, and I thought that you had to have about 10,000 square foot per unit? Is it something like that, 10,000 or 14,000 square foot per unit?
So I think what you might be getting at is, there's a density calculation, it would be on my site plan, I think it's kind of up in the upper right-hand corner.
14,000?
It's 14,000 square feet?
Per unit?
Per unit. So what happens is you take the total gross area of the property, however many acres that is, and convert it to square feet, and you divide that number by 14,000, that would give us our density yield. In other words, I'm permitted to have this many units. Now, I have to engineer that, just because it's permitted doesn't mean we're necessarily going to be able to engineer it, but in this case we are. So that's, I think, what you might be referring to.
Yeah, because I was looking at the acreage, and I thought I saw that there was a total of 196,000 square feet available, and I'm like, if it's...
196,000, yep, you're right.
They do have more units on the plan than what the gross land area would support based upon the calculations, and they have noted on the plan that there's a variance required because of that.
Right. So that's about the variance.
So they will have to go to the zoning board to hear that issue.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The variance is to allow, so as of right, under the zoning code, they have the 14 dwelling units per what the square footage is of the parcel, but in order to get the additional 14 units that the applicant is asking for, that would need to be created specifically by the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay.
And that was a substitution of the commercial detail that we were looking to put there?
Yeah, I got that, I just wanted to be sure.
Tom, any questions? Joan? Engineering, any questions?
Not at this time, no.
Legal?
I just have a few things still outstanding. Again, I remind the applicants that this will need architectural review at one point, that's not this board. There, I don't know if the plans have been updated, I have a note that I, that the board asked if the plans be updated to show which trees are being removed, so that we can, I know that your EAF states that there's minimal tree removal, and obviously you have to comply with the guidelines for BAT, for BAT migration, but if you can confirm exactly how many trees so that they can make the determination whether or not it's minimal?
We can hit that.
Okay. I, I'm, again, being caught up into this, I have a notation that we believe that the code is going to require you to get an additional variance for your parking location on site.
Are you referring to the fact that we are not behind the buildings, as opposed to the buildings being perpendicular to the street?
Right. So add that to things that need to be addressed with CBA. Yes, I have a note that this was supposed to be referred to the DPW, I'm assuming for water. I have a note that I asked for, us will serve water, but I don't have record of ever receiving one, so that would have solved the board's question as to how many gallons are available, and, so if you get that from DPW, that would be helpful for the record.
I can try and get that guess.
Yeah, but if there's adequate capacity, we shouldn't have an issue providing it for water and sewer. And then it was supposed to refer to the Fire Department and Police Department, did we get, do we do that?
I have not done that yet.
Okay.
But I will do that.
Okay, I can do it too, on the board's behalf, if you want to direct it to me.
Yes, please.
Okay, no problem. That, anything we receive from Fire and Police will be added as part of the public record and for the board's consideration, which is like every other public comment. And then, I have record that this was sent to the county by the ZBA, in which case we received county responses, one of them noting that it's not considered a complete response, it's not considered a complete submission to the county absent a full traffic study. I'm told that traffic study has been submitted, completed, well, has been submitted now, so unless it's been done so, we need to send this to the county, which would of course require the 30-day out time. Is that everybody's understanding, applicant?
This is the first of hearings.
Okay, I don't think we've received, right, I don't remember receiving, I have no record of county, of me sending something to the county for this board.
No, we've only submitted to New York State DOT, so unless the board has submitted, no.
Okay, so I'm going, so with the board's approval with that as well, when I send to Fire and Police, then I'll also refer to Orange County Department of Planning.
Okay, and when you're done, let me know when you're done.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, I believe Joan has one more.
Mike, there's a, there's a reference in the front of the building, between the sidewalk and the building, there's a park. What does that mean?
Who has access to it?
Yeah, I mean, is it a park, or is it just a convenient place for your tenants?
Yeah, I mean, we had started discussions about that with the Village Board, but I'd be lying to you if I couldn't tell you exactly where that went. I'd have to circle back on that and see what the thoughts were. I believe it was to be open to the public, similar to, I think some of the, I don't know if I would call them pocket parks, but along 94, there's other areas there that are parks and they're generally open to the public. That was my understanding, but let me double-check on that, and I'll get back to you on it.
Joan, does that pocket park that's open to the public, does that present any issues for the village?
No, if it will be open to the public, we would need to establish some type of anisement to allow for that to occur, but as I recall, the discussions were begun, and the applicant at the time just wanted to see how the project went before making a final determination on whether it would be private or public access to it.
Understood.
Yeah, now that we're at the back end of the project, it probably makes sense to have that conversation.
Understood. Now?
If you can represent the Village Board, we can begin.
Any objections to being open to the public?
I'd have to, I mean, the only thing I can think of, and I can't speak on behalf of the applicant, more than anything else, is really just for the applicant or the owner, is a liability issue. So we just want to make sure that it doesn't impact them in any negative way that way. That's the only thing I could see that could potentially be something we have to consider, but I'm sure there's a workaround for it.
Understood, thank you. Do you have any questions for the board, or Mr. Greeley, any questions for the board?
None at this time.
Okay.
Last round, anybody?
No.
Okay. Any more questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we need to have a motion, we need to set a date for the continued public hearing, which is something that we did not do at the last meeting, so, date-wise, do you think the applicant have a preference?
Whatever the next available date is.
That would be the next meeting. So, a motion to set the date for the next 61 East Main Street public hearing, to set it for continuation on February 28th at 7:00 p.m. at the Village Hall, motion please.
I make the motion that we set the date for the 61 East Main Street public hearing, continuation to the next meeting, February 28th, here at the Village Hall, 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Vote. Jacqueline? Jacqueline, this is for the day?
Yes.
Can I put the next? Okay, so the meeting carried, the motion carried, and the next public hearing for 61 East Main will be Tuesday, February 28th, at 7:00 p.m. here, unless otherwise noticed. A motion to adjourn, please?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Bye.
And we are adjourned, thank you very much.